All right, we are live.
All right, let's give people a couple of minutes to filter in.
Why does my name say Joan?
I know.
I can probably, I'll do it for you.
I didn't do it.
I think the link I've gotten, and now I'm getting a text from Elsie saying she's waiting to be let in. I'll resend. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, five. Okay. And then Elsie will join us when she gets in. So now it's, I guess we just wait another minute. Up, there's Phil.
There we go. He was letting me in as a participant. Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's well.
Elsie's in the attendees.
I can't figure that out, but I can bump that.
Yeah, she might have done the same thing I did.
Thought I just promoted her. Well, maybe she gave up because maybe I'm signing on time.
I see your name.
Oh, good. Elsie, you're now part of the big meeting, but you gotta tick off your mute and your camera.
Elsie, is she here?
I don't know why my picture is not showing, but I'm here.
I'm gonna ask.
My camera is on.
All right, I've asked you to.
Okay, start my video.
Yes, she is.
There we go.
Okay, very good. I think we're all here now. All right, so let's really get started this time. Okay. The Borough is using the Zoom application for the meeting format in an effort to mitigate the chance of exposure to COVID-19. As a part of the Borough's ongoing effort to slow the rate of transmission and avoid overwhelming our treatment centers, the public is invited to attend and participate by way of a call-in number and password. They were all provided. Do I need to read them off again?
No, you can just read the open public meetings statement.
Okay. All right, then. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune, an email to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on October 14th, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on October 14th, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Councilman Hirsch, could you lead us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, I'm fully equipped here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
The Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Divisible, just for taking justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pearl Metler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovare.
Here.
Okay. Council members, does anyone have any questions on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll go right into our council reports. I will call on you as you appear on my screen. So we're going to start with you, Tara. Could you have a report for this evening?
Yes, thank you. October is National Eat Better and Eat Together Month. It encourages families to gather for meal times. When families enjoy their meals together, they tend to be more balanced food choices. Also, what better way to spend time together than share each other's daily adventures? It's also a great time to get some takeout from downtown and bond with your families. The Board of Health wants to remind everyone that COVID-19 is still an issue, and please follow social distancing and get vaccinated. Also, they would like to voice their support of the first two items on the consent agenda. 10212261 Resolution in Support of Fossil Fuel Disinvestment and Increased Green Investment in New Jersey State Pension Fund, and also the Resolution in Support of Withdrawal from of the CPV Application for a Second Kingsbury Gas Fired Power Plant. As we all know, food insecurity is still high. And we, as you know, we have two programs, the Community Food Pantry and Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Together, these two programs serve over 300 families. The Food Pantry is open the second and fourth Thursday from 9:00 AM to 10:45 AM and 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And the Saturday following the second and fourth Thursday of every month, from 9:30 to 10:30. And Gives a Hoot is open from 10:30 to 11, I'm sorry, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Tuesdays. The Mental Health Commission wants to remind everyone, the Middlesex County's crisis hotlines, Rutgers University Behavioral Health is 855-515-5700. Raridan Bay Medical Center hotline is 732-442-3797. If you need help, please reach out. Help is available. Thank you.
And Tara, just so folks can hear, the HP Gives a Hoot food distribution is done through the Zone 6 Teen Center, correct?
Correct. Okay. They can also call if for any reason they can't get there. Ashton will deliver.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Hale, you're up next.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The mayor is going to talk a little bit about the grant that we just received for the Neighborhood Preservation Project. I just want to say it's a great opportunity for for Highland Park. She's going to talk a lot about it, but also I wanted to give a shout out to to Emma and to Terry for their hard work in making it happen. So you'll hear some more details from the mayor, but it's really a great opportunity for for Highland Park to work up in the Woodbridge area, Woodbridge Avenue area. So it's exciting. So I'll let her talk about that. So tonight I just have one, one item that I think is important to talk about. You know, COVID hasn't brought a lot of good things, but if there's one good thing that it has brought, it's outdoor dining to many different towns throughout New Jersey. And in Highland Park, we certainly did that, creating our town tables. Took a lot of coordination and work between the police, the fire, the DWP, Main Street Highland Park, and then, of course, lots of residents throughout town. And it's made it a great success and a great part of Highland Park. We recently have learned, however, that as of November 1st, the town tables, as they are currently configured, may not be in compliance with DOT regulations, an executive order from the governor, and new guiding legislation. We're currently trying to better understand exactly what is and what is not permitted under these rule changes. And then also importantly, we're discussing with businesses and downtown residents and restaurants, if we have to move or reconfigure these, what is going to be most helpful? So I just wanted to let everybody know that that is an ongoing discussion that we're going to continue to be having with with DWP and a number of folks, but I also wanted to make some important points about this. This mayor and this council, I think, remain 100% committed to permanently closing South Third and transforming it into a unique and vibrant public space. We're currently have our traffic engineering firm doing a major traffic study that is required as we submit a permanent closure application to the DOT. It's important for me to point out that this permanent closure process is separate from any sort of temporary process that is out there. So that is ongoing. That's something that we've, we're still quite committed. We've already started talking with Main Street Highland Park, and we've received some really great feedback and ideas about how and where we might reconfigure the town tables on both South Third and North Fourth into the existing space, and also options for how we might place new town tables around town during the winter so people can continue to use them. They've shared a number of great ideas, and we look forward to continue to working with them along with the DOT, determining what exactly is possible. We've talked about a lot of different ideas, and those discussions are going to be continuing as we make sure to do our best to try and stay within the regulations and also make sure that we have those options. As we've stated since day one of the redevelopment process, this council and this mayor are committed to making sure that we have adequate and permanent public open space available as we move ahead with the downtown redevelopment plan. So that still is going on. That's not changed at all. The bottom line is that we're going to continue to work hard to discover what's possible to do with the town tables for the winter. I wish I could say and promise that they're going to stay as they are or eventually become permanent because we need a lot more wedding proposals to happen down on the town tables. One's just not enough. So we're going to continue to work on that. We're going to do our best to make sure that we hold on to these as best we can. But there is a bit of uncertainty, and I just wanted to make sure that that's out there so that we are transparent and let everybody know that this is an ongoing process we're going to continue to work on. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Hale. All right, Councilwoman Stephanie Kim Cho Han, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to briefly from finance, last month we were advised by our tax assessor that the county tax board will most likely order Highland Park to complete a reevaluation at their November meeting. They will ask that it be done for the 2023 tax year, which is the same time Middlesex Borough is scheduled to be completed as well. I will keep everybody updated as the details start to roll in. Also, I want to remind everyone that early in-person voting starts this Saturday, October 23rd. You can find more information at middlesexcounty.gov under the Clerks Department. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy Halloween, one of my favorite times of the year, the most wonderful time of the year. No, I'm joking. But everyone stay safe and spooky and happy Halloween.
Thank you, Stephanie. I also would urge you that as we get closer to finding out about when, exactly when the tax revale is going to be, perhaps you can work with the Borough Administrator on a brief presentation of what a tax revale really is.
Yes, we will definitely have that with a tax assessor because I'm going to have to educate myself as well. So yeah.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Hirsch, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Hi, I'm Matt Hirsch. I chair the Arts and Rec Committee. So please join us on Sunday, this Sunday, September, October, I'm sorry, this Sunday, October 24th, for our annual Halloween party and costume parade from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Community Center parking lot. Please note the change in location this year. Please come out to participate in the parade, enjoy music and snacks, a trick-or-treat safety presentation from the HPPD, a bouncy house, and more. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to copy Councilwoman Kim Cho Han's greeting to stay safe and spooky. I love that. Next, on Tuesday, October 26th, there'll be a community blood and platelet drive here at the Community Center between noon and 6:00 PM. And this is in memory of New Jersey State Trooper Anthony Raspe. A who's from Highland Park who passed away on duty in 2015. Please join us on the evening of Wednesday, October 27th, for the Zone 6 Haunted House, located on the side of the Community Center between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM. The Highland Park Police Department trunk or treat event will also take place that evening here in the Community Center parking lot. The Veterans Alliance for Raridan Valley will hold its annual Veterans Day ceremony and parade on Thursday, November 11th, starting at 11:00 AM. Ceremonies will take place, starting at the Doughboy Monument, on the refurbished Doughboy Monument, and the parade will proceed down Raridan Avenue, ending in New Brunswick. We encourage spectators to attend the ceremony and line the streets to pay tribute to our veterans. If you missed our recent flu shot clinic, there will be another one on Tuesday, November 16th, between 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM at the Community Center. And this one is sponsored by Rite Aid. And please note that, just like the last one, this is available for all ages, six months and over. Obviously, under 18 must have a signed consent or a parent or guardian with them. And please remember that the Borough offers free COVID-19 testing at the Community Center here at 220 South Sixth Avenue. Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, 9:00 AM to 6:30 PM. And Sundays, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Pre-registration is encouraged but not required. You can register for a testing appointment at testnj.online. Testing is no cost to participants, and those who are uninsured will have their tests billed to care, funded by the CARES Act. My, under 18 residents are eligible to be tested, provided that they have a parent or guardian present. And just for anybody experiencing housing instability from the pandemic, you can go to www.hpboro.com, and there is a button that says rental assistance, and that will show you some of the resources that are available and specifically what your rights are. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. At this time, I would like to request a moment of silence for the passing of Colin Powell, our first black US Secretary of State who died from complications of cancer and COVID-related illnesses. He was fully vaxxed, but he had some pre-existing conditions. So I would ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. Operation Take Back is going to be this, this weekend, the 23rd. Anyone who have unused medication may drop it off over at the police department. They are available, the drop box, medicine box will be available for you to drop any unused medication that you may have. Just drop them off at any time over there. So please, all your unused medication, do not flush them down the toilet. It causes a lot of damage to the, the ground life. So we want to make sure that everyone, our fish stay good and everything else. Our wildlife is taken care of, so please drop off your medication at the police department. Couple of my thunder was stolen, such as trunk or treat, that was already reported on, that it's going to be the third annual trunk or treat by the police department. And anyone who's interested in finding out more, donated or given up their time, can reach out to Officer O'Mara, and he'll be more than happy to take all the volunteers that we have to help with this program. It's from 4:00, 4:00 PM, and it's for kids five to seven years old. So please, if you're interested, reach out. Also, Zone 6 is doing their their Halloween Spooky House. So if you want to be spooked, head on over to Zone 6 on the 27th. That's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They have like a really great flyer that they put together, and it's and it's going to be a really good time. They've been doing a really good job with it for the past few years, and I'm quite sure this year is going to be one of those spectacular, spectacular time as well. Um, they have a program called Graphically Speaking. It's a collaboration between Zone 6 and our public library, and our public library. So anyone who's interested to see what you're doing, stop in and see what's going on at Zone 6. They're always doing something creative and interesting and engaging in the community. And it has been literally God-sent for our community because all these kids drop in all the time. With that said, they, they have participated in basketball championships, and they are currently the winner. They will be, there will be a game between Zone 6 basketball players, and they're going to be facing off the Detroit team. And that's interesting because the team is coming in from Detroit to play a game, and they'll be facing off with Zone 6. So that's going to be really exciting. That's November 12th. So anyone who's interested can reach out to Ashton Morell over at Zone 6 and get more information. With that said, they, they are the gift that keep giving back year after year. They're doing a turkey track. Anyone who's in need of turkeys or in need of any kind of holiday assistance with the Thanksgiving holiday, they are putting a whole bag together so everyone can have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Again, reach out to Ashton. You can email him at aburrell, A-B-U-R-R-E-L-L, at hpboro.com. So please feel free to reach out to Ashton, put your name on the list for anyone who might want a turkey or is in the need of a turkey, and he'll be more than happy to supply that. Put your name on the list and provide you with all the stuffings for Thanksgiving. To Middlesex County Department of Consumer Affairs will be doing a live presentation on consumer fraud scam and awareness on Thursday at 11:00 AM at the Community Center. Anyone who's interested in being a part of this, it's at 11:00 AM, can reach out to the Community Center, and they'll provide that information. The Fire Department, as you know, October is Fire Prevention Month, and last month I reported that you need to change your batteries, your radar detectors, and they go out and they do fire awareness to the kids in the schools. So kudos to the Fire Department for all the hard work that they continue to do. I know this past weekend, there was a fire over at Parker, Parker Adult Living Facility, and it was in the, it was in their laundry room, and they were on hand to put that fire out with no incident. No one was harmed. Everyone was kept safe. Also, with Fire Prevention Month, you, we should take a look, for those who don't have this information, there is a website that's available. It's a National Fire Protection Association. And they have a list of flyers and pamphlets and what to do keeping your home, how to keep your home safe. It's the dues that how, what do you do to keep your home safe? Not only just your home, but they have pet safety as well. And in case there is a fire, pet evacuation as well as everyone else, keeping your family evacuated and making them safe. So that website is nfp.org, and it's public education on fire, cause, safety, risk, wildlife, for you to take action and just go there, and tons of information is provided. Last week, I attended the second, a part of a series through the Obama Institute. And this one is what's done to the graduate school in New York City. And it's the, it's a continuation, continuing the conversation on police reform. It was really interesting. They're doing a lot of things, believe it or not. They are instituting a lot of the things that we currently do here in Highland Park about keeping communities safe, community education, housing, employment, caring for communities and programs such as, that they introduce such as Zone 6, which is something that we are already doing. They are now implemented in different parts of New York City. One of the things that they also are working on is the aviation program, which I spoke about last month, that we have, we're working with Alpha Aviation, New York City Department now is working with an aviation company to teach kids how to fly, how to do drones, and who wants to get involved in air traffic controlling. So that's, that's what we learned last week of some of the things that they're doing. This coming Thursday will be part two, and it's how to invest in your community and keeping your community safe. So I will be reporting back as I learn more about how do, it's not about defunding the police, but it's disinvest and reinvest. That's a topic for this week, so that should be interesting. So as I learn more, I will share with all of you. That's part two of the police re-reform Obama Institute New York project. I have one more thing, which I'm trying to find, and I spoke about Operation Take Back. Oh, last but not least, it's our Adult Police Academy. There's still space available for anyone who's interested. It's, as I said before, it's going to be from November 8th to December 20th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Anyone who is interested, please reach out to our police department, go to their website, or even go to the Borough website to get more information. And the goal is to, just to keep us informed and give us a bird's eye view as to what police officers do on a daily, on a day-to-day basis. And again, interested persons can reach out to Patrolman O'Mara at 732-572-3800, extension 4262, or B-O-M-A-R-A at hpboro.com. So please take a look at that website if you're interested. Last but not least, I'm asking everyone to slow down in our town. School is back in season. A lot of activities for young, for school ageers, school-age children are done outdoors. So please, 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 I can't say it enough, to slow down in our town and to keep each and every one of us safe. This morning, we had an incident in town of an accident, and we want to make sure that we don't see any of those happen anymore. As we, we work, the police department work really hard to try to keep everyone safe, to have signage in place, and to make sure that everyone is doing their due diligence. So we need for each and every one of us to play our part and keeping Highland Park a safe place. And that's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foster. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. I have a very brief report. First, just a reminder to everyone, if you check and check the website of Borough's website as well, this week and next week will be the last two weeks for bulk trash pickup by appointment. After that, we switch over to leaf collection. Leaf bags are available, but if you want an appointment, you better call soon because we only have a few days left. We'll try and accommodate everyone that we can. Second, Mayor, with regard to the spotted lanternfly, the news, the news is good, bad, and indifferent. I checked the state website today and the county's website today, and the news is still the same. Stomp them out. They're all over the place, and in the spring, they'll start breeding. The only suggestions I found for treatment are some videos of homemade traps which capture a few, but everyone who's had them, and I've talked to a number of people who have them in their yards, there are hundreds and hundreds of hundreds going all the way up to the top of a tree, sometimes 30 or 40 feet tall. However, the Borough, as we had advised a couple of meetings ago, was putting together the best plan that we can find right now and stack, and along with volunteers from the trail and the sanctuary, put together a number of suggestions, which will be posted very shortly on our website, so they're available. We'll try and put them out on all of our social media as well. It's a compendium, but as I said, the information right now about them is not all that good. However, the Borough has also made a decision to try and help people out as best we can, similar to the Emerald Ash Borer, which killed most of our ash trees. If you're, if you lose a tree and it needs to be removed from your yard, the Borough will waive the permit for removal of the dead tree and waive the mandatory replacement fees or requirements so long as, in fact, it is killed by the spotted lanternfly, and we'll verify that. But it's one thing that we can, we can't help save them right now. Both the state, the county, and all the experts say there's not much we can do right now. But we could certainly do the best we can, at least to make the burden a little bit lighter. We'll also be considering, as we did with the ash trees, how we go about dealing with the, with the street trees. Obviously, they'll have to be removed if. Um, obviously they'll have to be removed if, if they're killed and not all of them are being attacked by the spotted lantern fly. A little ray of good news, if you're fa- feeding your birds, I noticed that the Cardinals and the Blue Jays have been chasing spotted lantern flies around and I've seen them chomping on them on the branches. So at least there's, some of them are getting eaten by predators, which is a good thing. Um, and finally, just a report on trash. We've been keeping up uh, with, you know, trash and littering and upkeep. I walked several times through the uh, farmer's market on Friday and uh, the use of the temporary toders that we used to use during the uh, street fair and the arts in the park uh, were uh, uh, were in use and they seem to be absorbing some of the large pizza boxes which uh, contribute to overloading and blocking the, the other trash receptacles. Uh, two trips through seemed to be very successful, especially towards the end. And we'll keep you updated on more of our uh, trash and uh, initiatives. We also installed the new painted boxes down by Park Deli. Uh, corner where people tend to congregate. And that's all I have for today, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just one clarification. I just wanted to uh, echo what uh, Council President George just mentioned regarding the spotted lantern fly. And yes, we are all feeling pressure to try to figure out what to do. But I wanted to mention that in the case of the spotted lantern fly for the permit fee waiver, um, the, the tree that we are, we are all, in addition to, it should kill a tree, that would be an excuse for a waiver. But in addition, if you have a infested tree of heaven, uh, the current advice is if the homeowner wants to remove it to allow them to remove the tree of heaven tree, which is considered to be one of the host trees, we will confirm you are in fact referring to a tree of heaven and we will infer, confirm that there are infestations of the spotted lantern fly. But it doesn't, we're also extending that to living tree of heavens. I just wanted to make that clarification because I've had that question from a couple of presidents.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
Uh, no report, Madam Mayor.
All right, I have a few things to cover this evening. Um, first
Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman.
Before you go on, um, what does the tree look like that, um, that they like, that the lantern fly like? What kind of tree?
We'll be on the website. We'll send you, we'll put the links with the pictures on the website.
I think that's important to show.
Okay. All right, moving along. Um, first of all, as Councilman Hale um, said, I am really excited to announce that the New Jersey Department of Community Fairs has selected the Borough of Highland Park as one of twenty new communities to receive the Neighborhood Preservation Program designation. N P P, as we know it, um, was designed to strengthen the economic health of threatened but viable communities and to encourage private investment in these communities. The Borough's application focused on revitalizing the Woodbridge Avenue Corridor, Commercial District, and the adjacent residential areas to make it a more welcoming gateway into Highland Park and to nurture the economic development there. D C A selected communities like Highland Park based on community engagement, staffing capacity, readiness to proceed, the N P P mission feat fit, the feasibility goals, um, neighborhood assets, distress levels, past revitalization efforts and work to leverage other place-based designations. Emma Von Thun, Assistant to the Borough Administrator, will serve as the N P P Coordinator and she will work closely with the Borough's Stakeholder Engagement Team that we've just recently created. And they were created to implement a five-year plan to improve the Woodbridge Avenue District. Members of the Stakeholder Engagement Team include residents and businesses from the district as well as representatives from the Historical Commission, Planning Board, Main Street Highland Park, the Director of Middlesex County's Office of Business Engagement, Ms. Sandy Castor, will also serve on the team to help identify ways to align the Borough's work with that of the County Designation Destination Twenty Forty Plan. Uh, the Borough will receive a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grant funding during the first year of the program with the opportunity to receive additional funding of up to a hundred thousand dollars annually for an additional four years. In addition to the funding, a hallmark of N P P is that the program offers an array of technical assistance and training to support the empowerment of participating local governments and neighborhood district stakeholders so that they can build a foundation to sustain their revitalization efforts over time. I want to thank Councilman Matt Hale and the other members of the Council's Economic Development Committee in advance for the work they will be doing to see this program through and for all their support in getting this important new initiative passed. Uh, I know it's tempting and we are all just so tired of COVID nineteen restrictions. We've lived under them for the last couple of years. But please, friends, neighbors, don't abandon your face masks indoors yet. Yes, eighty-one percent of our adult population has been fully vaccinated. Yay, Highland Park. Yes, seventy-two percent of our eighteen to twenty-nine-year-old population has been fully vaccinated and that is great news. However, the CDC still um, is recommending that most of New Jersey wear a mask indoors in for, in public settings, even if they're fully vaccinated against COVID nineteen. The CDC advised all who are eligible to get vaccinated against the virus because many generations tend to gather to celebrate holidays, the agency said in its guidance that was released on Friday. The agency also recommends masking for fully vaccinated individuals at holiday gatherings in communities with substantial to high transmission. And as of Monday, that includes all of New Jersey except Union County, which has a moderate, moderate trans- transmission rate. And while I'm discussing recommendations for health precautions, um, as um, I believe Councilman Hirsch mentioned earlier, um, do not forget to get your flu shots. It's quick and nearly painless and a proven step to protecting your health and that of your family and friends. And in this vein, I'm happy to advise that the H P Community Center, as he had mentioned, will host another flu clinic. It will be held Tuesday, November sixteenth from ten AM till one PM. Um, there's been a lot of talk about the playground area in Donaldson Park. Um, and as I learned from Mr. Rick Lear, who is the Director of Middlesex County's Office of Parks and Recreation, the following is the status of Donaldson Park in the aftermath of Tropical Storm Ida. Picnic Groves One and Four are open for picnics. All comfort stations have been repaired, cleaned and are open for the remainder of the season. The off-leash dog area is open. The tennis courts are open. The majority of the walking paths and parking lots have been cleared with the exception of the southernmost portion of the park. And our Good Earth Garden is open. Both of the playgrounds have been inspected by a certified playground safety inspector and have been deemed unsafe and damaged beyond repair. They will need to be replaced. Both playgrounds have signage reflecting their closure. The equipment vendor representative has been out to take measurements and he is pulling together a plan for their replacement. He will need approximately three weeks to get the county a draft plan, equipment production and shipping schedule and cost estimate. I know several parents have written or called me and said that the playground looks safe. If the Parks Department is telling us it is not safe, I think they mean it. Uh, and they, and please, please follow their guidelines. Once the plan is complete, they will be able to solicit estimates on the removal of the existing playgrounds and installation of new equipment plus upgraded safety surfacing to the poured-in-place rubber surface. This information will then be reviewed with the County Engineering, Planning and County Administrator and the Commissioner Board for feedback and input on, that will be further, that will further inform what the next steps are going to be and the scheduling of the replacement. Until they have this additional information, they do not have a proposed timeline. However, they say that based upon the preliminary information they have, they have from their vendors, replacement will not happen this year. That you can count on. Um, lastly, there are many ways this governing body is working to improve life for our residents. Change is never easy. We won't ever all agree a hundred percent with one another. But when we disagree, we must find a way to do so civilly and with respect. Here are some guidelines I'd like us all to follow for constructive public discussion at these meetings and at any public meetings that we have here in Highland Park. I'll be following these guidelines and monitoring public comment at all our meetings. First, when one person talks, do not interrupt. Second, no sarcasm toward or bad mouthing should be leveled at another speaker. Don't display aggression or contempt towards those with whom you disagree. Raise your hand on the Zoom application so that we know you have something to say and you will be called on. If you disagree with someone else's perception, always be respectful and do not mock them. Okay, that's my report. And I hope you will all heed the advice that I just gave you. All right, we're going to move along now. We're about to head into our public uh, discussion, the first public discussion. Um, the total time allotted is twenty-one minutes. Three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda for this evening. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session, which will be later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on the phone keypad or select the raise hand button on the application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine with the raise hand button now. Terry, if you would announce.
Looks like we currently have thirty-six attendees and ten hands raised. So let's hope we can get through and hear from everybody. Again, it's on the agenda. First up is David Evans. Please state your name and address.
Hi, uh, my name is David Evans. I'm Senior Counsel of the Cannabis Industry Victims um, lit- educating litigators. Um, I'm making you aware that uh, if you approve a marijuana facility, a laboratory testing facility uh, in your town.
Excuse me, Mr. Evans, did you list your address? We need an address.
Two oh three Main Street in Flemington, New Jersey. Oh, eighty-two, that's where our office is located. Um, I'm making you aware now that having a marijuana facility uh, within a thousand feet of a school is a violation of Federal Controlled Substances Act. Uh, I've been informed that there is a Jewish girls' school within five hundred feet of the proposed site of the laboratory. If you approve this site, in my opinion, you will be engaging in a conspiracy to violate federal law. I, and um, uh, you would be subject to a possible lawsuit in lieu of prerogative writ. Uh, anybody wishing to sue would have forty-five days to the day you make this decision if you decide to implement it. Uh, the other problem that you have is this facility is going to be in a residential neighborhood. Uh, evidence from Columbia University shows that having marijuana facilities in neighborhoods lowers the property value. That will entitle those residents. And by the way, I understand that none of you live in that area. You're imposing this burden on, on uh, people where you don't live there yourself would be entitled to sue under the Federal Racketeering Influence and Corrupt Organizations Act, RICO. Uh, we have been involved in a number of these lawsuits nationally and we're very familiar with it. We work with attorneys. We have all the briefs, the complaints and everything available. So anybody that's under RICO can contact us. Um, we have, uh, we have people in the town that are uh, uh, interested in doing that. Uh, you've already allowed one marijuana facility into your town. Uh, I think you're aware that seventy-one percent of the urban municipalities in New Jersey rejected them with good reason. Uh, you are in a minority and you are going to wind up getting a lot of the marijuana business because of that. I think you should take a careful view of that, track on it, look at increases in drug driving in town, increases in drug incidents in the school.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, in towns that have facilities. So I would urge you to not violate federal law. You're now on notice that what you're about to do is violating federal law.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Evans. Um, who's next?
Next up is Milagros Aguayo. State your name and address, please.
Hello, do you hear me? Good evening. Yes, my name is Milagros Aguayo and I live in one or two South Den Avenue. Okay, I agree with Dave Evans and I want the council to vote no on the laboratory resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yep, it looks like someone coming up as John spelled J O N. Please state your full name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, my name is Jonathan Lerner. I live at two twenty-eight Magnolia Street. And I have a couple of questions regarding the Borough Agreement that's being handled uh, with the Rutgers Gun and Boat Authority and the uh, Reform Church of Highland Park Affordable Housing Thought Corp- Corporation. Um, on page eight of the uh, agenda for tonight's meeting, it says, I it's speaking about the regarding the preparation of the space that the Borough is renting out to the organization. It said the R C H P A H C shall be responsible for cleanup of the first floor space, including front windows with support from the Borough as needed. And I'm just wondering what, from this, you know, uh, what sort of obligation the Borough has here. There's basically three thousand dollars of total rent over six months. And I'm just wondering what sort of support the Borough is promising or offering there.
So I'm just going to ask the Borough Administrator, who's been working on this, to um, answer that question.
Uh, the, a lot of those, the minutia will be ironed out in the forthcoming lease agreement that the Borough Attorney will be helping us draft. Um, but what's intended is potentially a few hours of public work support as well as helping them haul some materials out. Um, we wanted to upgrade the front of that building anyway, so this is a good opportunity to kind of get both things.
Okay, okay. So no real financial support. You know, somebody could break a window and it's three thousand dollars to repair a window.
The window is broken. There's insurance. We have other, you know, we have ways of handling those. It's our property. We have to maintain it.
Okay, but the Borough's not, you know, there's no financial support for the, for the cleanup project.
No.
Okay, uh, and also on the same page, um, it's, uh, it reads, whereas the R C H P A H C desires to lease the second floor of the building to provide affordable housing for a low-income family. It's, it reads whereas the R C H P A H C desires to lease the second floor of the building to provide affordable housing for a low income family. Just want to confirm or make, understand if is that one family, it's renting, it's gonna be one family that's occupying the space?
It's gonna have to be a pretty small family and that it's a one bedroom, so yes.
Okay, I just wondered, I didn't understand the size and the scope of it. It's pretty big second floor. I didn't know if it, you know.
It isn't as big as you might, it's, it's a very nice space.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, any other speakers?
Looks like Ellen Witt is up next. State your name and address, please.
Ellen? Okay, my name is Ellen Witt. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, my name is Ellen Witt. I live on South First Avenue, twenty South First. I just wanted to speak tonight in support of the resolution which calls for the withdrawal of the application. Of the Competitive Power Ventures proposed second gas fired plant in Keesby. This plant, which is actually not needed, will be put out, will put out over two million tons. Of greenhouse gases annually, which is actually in contradiction to New Jersey's environmental justice statute. As well as the New Jersey Energy Master Plan to reduce greenhouse emissions. Not only that, but the application. For this plant would allow them to put out tons and tons of pollutants, including sulfuric acid and carbon monoxide. Sulfur dioxide and ammonia. So this will affect not only Woodbridge, but also here in Highland Park. I, I just also want to mention briefly that I want to support the resolution and that supports fossil fuel divestment. And greenhouse and green investment in the New Jersey State Pension Fund. I personally am a former public school teacher and a participant in the teachers pension fund. And I think it's important that these state funds get out of fossil fuel investment. It is a losing investment over the long run and this getting support from local communities on this. I think will, will help move that divestment process along. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. I agree with everything you said.
Next up, I see divest NJ, who I suspect might be Tina Weiss House. If you could state your name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes. So my name is Tina Weiss House and I live at one forty three North Fifth Avenue. I am the chair of Sustainable Highland Park. And I'm here speaking in favor of the two resolutions on your agenda that Ellen Witt just spoke about. One calling on the state pension to divest from fossil fuels and invest in renewables. And the other opposing a new fracked gas power plant in Kays B Woodbridge. Back in June, Sustainable Highland Park wholeheartedly voted to support both resolutions. And pass them to the council for approval. Since June, we have lived through one of the wettest and hottest summers on record for New Jersey, including. Hurricane Idaho, which dumped more than eight inches on Highland Park, causing great harm to many of our residents and businesses. I believe that the Highland Park community represented by you, our elected officials. Gets the climate science that tells us time is running out regarding our ability to stave off the worst impacts of global warming. Although some amount of increased temperature and its impacts are already baked in. We must stop burning fossil fuels as of now to make sure that the worst does not happen. Based on the science, continuing to invest our New Jersey Pension Fund in fossil fuels. Using our tax dollars is unsupportable financially and morally. It is terrible for the pension and terrible for the planet. Investing in renewables to hasten the energy transition is a must. And if Kays B does indeed need another power plant, which is in question, it must be renewable. We can no longer ignore the increased greenhouse gases that will come from this fracked gas power plant. And the pollutants from burning fossil fuels that increase respiratory and cardiac problems and even shorten lifespan. I want to thank you for being an environmental on climate conscious council. Particularly our liaison Phil George and Mayor Gail for being part of the Climate Mayor's Organization. I hope that I am not being presumptuous in assuming that these resolutions.
Thirty seconds.
Will pass tonight. Passing them will add Highland Park's official voice to the urgent call. To speed up transition to a low carbon, renewable, safe and sustainable future. And I thank you for your good work and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Tina, and thank you for all your good work.
All right, mayor, our next up is Claudia Farber slash Don Stern. You could confirm who's on the line and your address, please.
Yes, hi, it is Don Stern and address is three seventeen Summit Place in Highland Park. I wanted to speak also in support of the divestment resolution, but Tina did such a good job that she sort of stolen any thunder I had. So that said, I'll just register my support and, and urging. That you pass the resolution, we need to stop using fossil fuel as fast as we can. The, the town is in jeopardy, the state is in jeopardy, the country is in jeopardy, the world is in jeopardy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don, a hundred percent agreement. For me, I can't speak for them. Okay.
Mayor, I have a note just so you're aware, eight oh five is when we need to, so we've got about nine minutes. Looks like phone number ending in four, 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 five. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. About the gun and boat shop, which I thought was called Rutgers Gun and Boat thirteen B. I guess next week we'll have the public session, the public questioning.
Yeah, the hearing scheduled for next, the next council meeting.
Next two weeks, okay, but.
November ninth.
The ninth, okay, November. Okay, well, I'm curious, when did the borough finally close on that property? What did it cost? And before the inventory is thrown out, I know an auction, an auctioneer, his trucks were there, I had seen years ago, just around Labor Day. But very often they leave behind paperwork, which I'm told by people who own computers that that's the easiest to sell. If paperwork booklets, pamphlets, instruction booklets are available. Or will they be disposed of at the bicycle auction or has that come and gone? If there is inventory and has someone repaired the tree, part of the tree that fell at the very rear. Here overlooking my property, it fell onto their building and I notified the, the children, the phone, I think was disconnected by then. But will that be repaired? Has the borough repaired it? And I think it's a great idea. It's, it's thrilling to hear. You're actually recycling for temporary, this building, this poor, long suffering building and for a terrific reason. So I'll end there and just ask, does any, will anyone give me please the cost when we, the borough owned it? Uh, started owning it, purchased it from, I guess, the Aziz children. And what is happening with the leftovers? Thank you.
Okay, so borough administrator, do you have the exact cost at your fingertips there?
I did my best to grab it. I believe all in was. I'm hesitant to give you the wrong number, but I, I. Could I get back to Ms. Loving? Because now I don't trust the piece of paper I managed to find.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather accurate information.
But, but I can certainly, and she knows how to find me and she can give me a call. I can, I can look it up for you.
No, I won't, I'm sorry. No, I, I don't want to call, I'll call the clerk.
Okay, you may call the clerk and she'll dig out the, the file for you. I just, I thought I had it and now I'm not trusting it. Okay.
Okay, how about the, they recycle the items you're cleaning, somebody's.
We haven't figured out exactly. There are some things left in the building. I have yet to discuss with the borough attorney. What our obligations are in terms of sale versus trash, or some of the stuff is pretty moldy and. And dusty and, and things like that. So we're gonna have to take all those things into balance and make a decision from there as to what we can recycle. We've already put some of the stuff back into use.
Hi.
Public work garage.
Okay, if you need a former appraiser, I will give you a free guestimate or Don Stern will probably give you a little guestimate too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oh, where are we on time for the closing of this part?
Five minutes, mayor.
Okay.
Three hands at this point.
Okay. So next.
We, Paul Sowers. Looks like Paul, you have an old version of Zoom. I'm going to slow down and tell you, I'm going to promote you to panelist, which may mean your camera will flicker on momentarily until I have a chance to shut it off. So just get yourself ready for that eventuality, Paul, I'm promoting you to panelist now. And I'm going to. Highway, mind you. Stop your video. All right, sorry about that. Now please just confirm your, who you, you are and your.
My name is Paul Sowers, two forty two South Sixth Avenue. Pretty much what I've want to say has been said by Ellen, Tina and Don. I, I'm on Sustainable Highland Park. I think it's. Totally clear that we do not need to be building new plant, fossil fuel plants. Or and or in investing our pension funds in those kind of companies and. I don't really have any more to say. I mean, it's, it's, I think this town gets it and. And I hope we can continue to make, make more progress in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And one more?
Yes, uh, looks like we have someone coming up as Kavery. Please just state your phone name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Dr. Karen Ebbell Avery. I live at four oh two Graham Street. I want to go on the record to support what Mr. Dave Evans said. Though the residents of Highland Park do not need, do not want, do not desire. A marijuana weed laboratory in our town. Particularly in a residential area and what was not mentioned is that the proposed location is literally in the same building as a pediatric office. And I think that's harmful and I do not support that designation and authorization of a lab in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. And time, how are we doing on time for this session?
It looks like we have three minutes and we have one hand, so that might work.
Okay, good.
And Botian, you're up next.
Hi, Mary Botian, seven oh nine Madison. First, great on the Rutgers Gun and Boat Building and great on Keesby. Not so great on the proposed laboratory resolution and ordinance. As neither one specifically excludes cannabis, which many of us recognize. To be the town's approach of trying to allow a weed lab into Highland Park. If this is the town's intention, many of us, and I reference the hundred and fifty residents. Whose names were entered, entered into the record just a few weeks ago. We'd like to remind the mayor and each council member of a few important details. And we specifically request that you vote no based on the current missing language. January twenty eighth, twenty twenty, at a meeting in Borough Hall to discuss the incoming girls' school on Cleveland Ave. The mayor was asked if the school would provide a drug free zone for the neighborhood and she answered yes. In addition, marijuana is specifically mentioned in the Federal Safe and Drug Free Communities and School Act. And remains on the federal controlled substances list. Gail was correct in saying that the one thousand foot drug free zone, including cannabis, would in fact apply to Cleveland Avenue. Obviously, it would be very unethical for the mayor's position to fail to uphold a drug free zone for Cleveland Ave. Given she specified its applicability to the school. With respect to council members, as well as any potential business operators or landlords. If they proceed thinking they are in the clear, based on the town's failure to advise otherwise. They will be treading on federal violations, which makes them vulnerable to legal entanglements. In order to protect the school, neighborhood residents, potential business owners, potential landlords. And very importantly, protect the mayor's integrity. The recommendation is for council to vote no on the proposed resolution and ordinance. Until they are modified to exclude cannabis or properly specify a thousand feet. From schools, church, synagogue, park or residential use area. Otherwise, parties are proceeding with a false sense of security on this from the town. Three simple questions if you would kindly answer at this time. Has the town advised landlords and business operators who have approached on pot?
Thirty seconds.
Have you advised that there is legal peril to proceed and that there are many residents in town who adamantly oppose the municipality hosting? If you have given this caution, when did you do so? If you have not provided this information to them, why have you not done so? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. I do want to make it clear that there will be no cannabis sold from this facility. This is a chemical testing facility. Okay, borough administrator, how?
At the twenty one minute mark, I will say two more hands popped up after I said we were all set, so I don't know how anyone.
What time were we supposed to stop this? Okay, so I'm going to ask that the other people wait till the second portion. Of the public comment so that they can make their comments then. Okay. We're moving on to ordinances requiring a first reading on our agendas. Clerk, would you please report introduction of an ordinance authorizing laboratory use within the commercial. Professional office and light industrial zones for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
An ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, authorizing a laboratory use within the commercial professional office and light industrial zones. And amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park. Has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved. I can.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Bill, you're, you're muted.
I apologize, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, next clerk, could you please report on introduction of ordinance authorizing lease agreement? With R C H P dash A H C for use of one twenty seven Raritan Avenue. For consideration of passage on first reading by title.
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex, authorizing the lease with the Reformed Church of Highland Park Affordable Housing Corporation pertaining to portions of block seventeen oh four. Lots forty one and forty two, also formerly known as the Rutgers Gun and Boat Shop property. Has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go on to the consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt agenda items fourteen A through fourteen L?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cannavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Just to remind everybody about the two resolutions who are opposing the CRC plan in Keesby. And more specifically, the divestment plan. All our committees, the Sustainable Highland Park. And the Environmental Commission put a lot of work in that. There was some disagreement as to the terms, which is. And everybody came together and, and worked out some great plans. And the divestment one in particular. It was requested by a number of volunteers to make it positive and add. a resolution encouraging investment in green infrastructure. Unless you think it's just an empty gesture. Some of us remember the last round of divestment was against apartheid in South Africa in the 70s. It seemed to have worked fairly well. So if everybody joined in on this, we actually might be able to have billions of dollars pour into green infrastructure. And New Jersey could be like Holland and the West Coast of England with thousands of windmills offshore that wouldn't even spoil the view. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, I am appointing Kathleen Cartheiser to the Council on Aging. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Thank you, Kathleen, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, it is now time for the second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning when and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by 9:00 PM. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your keypad or select the raise hand button in the application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of the phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak on any topic, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, Mayor, it looks like we have 31 attendees and six hands raised at this time. First up is Alan Williams. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Alan Williams, 319 Harrison. The term laboratory seems to be overly broad. You could be analyzing cannabis or plutonium. It would seem to me that you made it so broad that you you've changed the you've broadened you so much, you need to refer to the planning board as whether it's consistent with the master plan. The current terms of commercial radiologic and medical laboratory would seem to cover cannabis for what uses we're proposing. So basically, I don't see the need for this ordinance. And it probably would have been helpful if the ordinance had indicated that what you want is cannabis analysis and quantitation. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, Terry, do we have someone else?
Yep. Just one moment. Next up is coming up just Joseph. So Joseph, please state your first name and last name and your address.
Yes, my name is Joseph Fekete and I live at 12 South Eighth Avenue.
Okay, go on.
So I represent Highland Park South Side Cleanup, a citizen-led group whose focus is to address the blight of trash currently afflicting the streets of our beloved borough, specifically on the south side where we've noticed it is far more of an issue than the north side. Our volunteers meet every Sunday, well, every other Sunday, to pick up garbage on the streets. Since our first meeting in May, we have removed over 415 pounds of waste from just the south side alone of our tiny borough. Trash continues to be a persistent nuisance on many of our streets, some of which has been littered in place, but much of which is there because it is blown out of recycling bins without lids, blown from busy commercial spaces that fail to keep up with their property maintenance and are allowed to do so with seemingly few and mild consequences, and blown from overfilled receptacles along Raritan Avenue. On July 15, I spoke to the Public Works Committee on some common sense ideas that our volunteers feel would have a big impact in mitigating this issue. The key initiatives we have proposed are recycling totes with lids, garbage receptacles along Magnolia Street, Big Belly solar receptacles in high-traffic areas, and ordinance limiting junk flyers and circulars and higher and more frequent fines on messy businesses and properties. On October 5, I spoke with you, Madam Mayor, about these same ideas. Thank you for that time again. It is challenging to grasp how a town such as Highland Park, which considers itself an environmentally conscious community, has thus far failed to address this important issue in a meaningful and substantive way. Not only does it affect the environment, specifically the Raritan River, which we should be diligent stewards, but it is an eyesore, an embarrassing blight on our town that surely does nothing to help property values or lure businesses to our ailing mainstream. I acknowledge some of the small actions taken that the council president spoke about this evening, but there's simply not enough. We are here this evening to respectfully request a proposed timeline for the borough to implement these initiatives by the next council meeting on November 9. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Joseph. I have been speaking with Council President Phil George and the Borough Administrator about the presentation you gave me in my office the other day. And we are looking at different costs. And just so you know, anything that we decide to do will have an impact on the budget, which means we're going to have to wait until the budget for the fall, the next year to enact anything. But both Councilman, Council President Phil George and the Borough Administrator are taking this very seriously. I want to also commend, even though you, it is a very small step, I want to commend them for getting those temporary trash cans out on the south side, particularly near the farmer's market that Phil spoke about earlier in the reports today. Okay, any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor, next is Joanna Wyatt-Tech. Please state your name and address for the record. You may have to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Jan McFatek. I live in 9 Redcliffe Avenue in Highland Park. Dear Highland Park Council, I live in Highland Park since 2017, and I appreciate its atmosphere, local initiative, and high safety level. Even the Highland Park has its charm. It's a very, I'm very concerned about the cleanest situation in the town to which Mr. Phil George was referring to. I'm fully supporting Highland Park South Side Cleanup Group and its brought agenda already presented to the council by Joseph. I belong to the group since its beginning, and I'm also participating in the Adopt the Block Initiative organized by the South Side Cleanup Group. Our town has an ongoing issue with trash being spread across the blocks. And I'm not only referring to the crowded areas along the bridge to New Brunswick, Raritan Avenue, or public parking lots. During picking up the trash from the block surrounded by South Adelaide, Raritan Avenue, and South West Avenue, I have observed a significant portion of recycling trash being spread away by the wind from private and public bins. You might say we cannot control the wind. Well, it's absolutely true, but we can control recycling trash storage. The solution which might help to solve this issue is applying recycling totes with lids. Properly closed bins will prevent the trash from spreading. I have also mentioned cleaners of the bridge towards New Brunswick. As many of you, I cross the bridge every day. I commute to work either by bike or walking. Hence, every single day I observe new trash on the pedestrian path on the bridge and towards it. There is no single trash bin between the bridge and South Adelaide, which is the entry to our town. Applying a bin or two in this area will minimize the amount of trash there. Finally, I would like to point out that winter is coming, which will bring snow. Hence, dear Highland Park, please get ready and be prepared to avoid the last year's nightmare. The pedestrian path along Raritan Avenue from South Adelaide towards the bridge, including the bridge, was not shoveled from the stone for three days after the massive storm. I have contacted Highland Park and New Brunswick Towns Bures several times to report this serious issue. I do understand the bridge connects two towns and both, hence both of them are responsible for.
Thirty seconds.
But at least Highland Park should take good care of its end. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Stay healthy.
Thank you, Joanna. Okay, do we have somebody else?
Yes, we do, Mayor. It looks like Omaris Zamora. State your name and address, please.
Hi, this is Omaris Zamora, 14 South Eighth Avenue. And I am here to also provide some support for the South Side Cleanup and also to voice that, you know, for me, it's not just, you know, I live in this community and I find it very strange that we pay such high taxes for those of us who are, who live here, who pay taxes here. And we walk through our neighborhoods and see trash everywhere, right? When there could simply be some trash receptacles and pointed places that can help with that, right? Because I think beautifully, we get to have a community where we get to go for wonderful walks, right? And be able to have that, but I think it would be important, right, for us to have a community that we care for, not just, right, for everyone's well-being, but also part of that is, right, seeing a space that we feel at home and that this is our home and we need to care for it, right? And I think that, I don't think we're asking for for much, but I think that we are asking for simple strategies that may help and something that has a long-term effect on how a community feels of itself and how a community is perceived, right? And that we are all part of this, this town, right? And really seeing some kind of change that will, that will foster that. And I don't think that we're asking for much. I think it's a small thing that can have great impact. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
Looks like, excuse me, William Garcia Medina is up next.
Hello, everyone. Excuse me. I want to thank the council for taking out of their time and, you know, you know, at this time of night to hear us and our plight and our demands and our suggestions and everything that we're doing, our advocacy in general. I definitely want to support the South Side Cleanup. I remember talking to Jeff Hirsch and talking to Joe Fakety about this issue. And I remember doing my first run, I was a little in disbelief about the amount of garbage until I did my first run, and I cannot believe the amount of garbage that you really have in these neighborhoods. And when I did a second run, we saw a lot more garbage, especially in Magnolia. And, you know, Joe Fakety has really changed my way of thinking about community. He really has, has taught me how to really take care of your own neighborhood. You know, this kind of advocacy is very important. And so, you know, the more I participate with the South Side Cleanup, the more I'm convinced that this kind of advocacy is necessary in order to really think about the demands such as recycling totes, garbage receptacles in Magnolia, the receptacles, the ordinance limitings, the fines on these businesses and properties. And I think that's important. I mean, obviously, you, you obviously know a lot of the consequence that comes with garbage overflows, but I just want to highlight something, you know, I've been educating myself on this issue and, you know, in terms of the air pollution, the disease, do the insects and pests, the contamination of surface water, the serious health issues, the effects on cities, and thinking about, obviously, the public nuisance. So I've been educating myself on this, on this issue, and I really do appreciate Joe Fakety and Jeff Hirsch for really kind of creating this movement that is really causing a lot of support in the community. The South Side Cleanup is getting a lot of traction. A lot of people want to see their neighborhood clean. So I definitely want to support the South Side Cleanup. And I know the council is invested in this community. So I hope that when you discuss the budget next year, you will consider South Side Cleanup because it is an issue. And I invite any of you council members that want to come by yourself and see it for your, with your own eyes. We would love to welcome you to, to, to help us see what's going on in the neighborhood. I know that you're, you're, you're more than willing to come down one of these Sunday mornings and see it for yourself so you can think about the issues that is happening. So thank you so much for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, Terry?
Got a few more hands, Mayor. It looks like phone number ending in 4445. Please state your name and address again, please.
Hi, Lois Loving again, North Second Avenue. Okay, Cleveland Avenue, will there a laboratory, might there be animal testing there? Okay, I won't, I'll keep going. Last week at the planning, planning board meeting, apparently I was the only attendee. There was a mention of the old gourmet building, which I take to be the old international market. The report was that there's only one unit rented, and I think that was maybe from a July information. As far as I can see, I saw one rear window light up and then a month later, the second rear window, and now the third one about a month ago. I spoke with the young man from New York City. So that plus the accessible unit, which was rented very, very early on this year. I think you have, you have more people that have been reported, are there COs? We don't know. But there is an ongoing parking war. Somebody has to do something. I'm looking at the March 2016 amendment to this building, this block and lot, block 173, lots 36 and 37, if I have the right building. And it talks about, well, maintaining off-site parking spaces that's, will continue as long as there are any residential units. Who enforces that? The redevelopers, the last, third page, parking and circulation. Redevelopers shall enter into and maintain agreements for one sparking parking space within 1,000 feet. Okay, so I don't think that's being done, but maybe it is, but there's still a parking problem on North Second. Also on page three of this March 2016 agreement for this block and lot, it talked about minimum buffer. I don't know if, I don't see, a buffer of five feet for the rear property line, and it shall consist of opaque fence. I don't think that's there. And evergreen trees and/or shrubs. Who is supposed to enforce this? Where is the parking? And trash cans, the third question or comment. I had to beg and beg for trash cans probably back in the mid 1990s to be put one block off 27 at the church parking lot on North Second because no one could understand kids buying goodies on the avenue and walking down.
Thirty seconds.
Say to Harrison or Cleveland. They couldn't understand it. This is where the food is consumed as they're walking off the avenue and the trash is on side streets also. I'm sure it's, it's all down 27 too. So you need more trash cans. It's a lot more work for DPW to stop every once a week and empty these out. Things get thrown under the liner. The liner doesn't allow the lid to close.
Time.
But if you want to control trash, you have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Borough Administrator, would you just check, have Scott or someone check on the parking situation with the International Shop building? Thank you. Okay.
It looks like we have five hands raised at this point, Mayor, 28 attendees. And Michael, excuse me, Michael Kleiser? Please state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. Michael Kleiser, 63 Cleveland. Just regarding the laboratory, I would urge my fellow citizens and the council to not let fear and ignorance cloud good judgment. Behind my house, there is an analytical laboratory that tests, that's certified by the DEP of our state to test for hundreds of hazardous chemicals, including benzene and lead and arsenic. And I can tell you, I've never observed an employee of that lab smoking a benzene cigarette outside the laboratory. These are professionals. They test for hazardous chemicals all the time. They're regulated by relevant agencies, and they have standards. And we ought not think that because they test for something that is harmful in theory, that what they're testing for or the results of those tests are harmful to the community. That's all.
Thank you, Michael. Okay.
Nancy LaParra? Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Nancy LaParra, 219 Harper Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the South Side Cleanup Agenda as well. I am also a volunteer with that group, and I've adopted a zone which includes from Harper Street to the main street, from South Second to South Third, which includes two public spaces, the farmer's market parking lot and the picnic tables on South Third. And these are big areas of trash, obviously, because there's more people. Every week or so, it takes, I spend about an hour and I get a whole bag full of trash. So I was thrilled to see the town. So I was thrilled to see the temporary trash receptacles that you put in at the farmer's market parking lot. It really did the trick. In five minutes, I have that area cleaned. So it's a simple problem that can be solved with more trash cans. So I appreciate your efforts and look forward to next year. That hopefully you'll get some money in the budget for more trash cans, including the South Third picnic area as well as Magnolia and other public areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
This person is coming up as Hirsch. Please state your name and address for record.
Hi, this is Jeff Hirsch, 261 South Ninth. No relation to Matt Hirsch, as far as I know. Co-founder of South Side Cleanup. I just wanted to, you know, speak again about some of the challenges we've been facing. Including, or instead of the, um, other than the lidless recycle bins, I'm a big offender that we've noticed are two of the big main businesses in town, Rite Aid and Stop &amp; Shop, huge offenders. I mean, I bike to work as well as Asia. And, you know, the weeks we don't clean up, there's just more and more trash. It seems like, you know, we're barely making a dent. Last I heard, I think the first fine for, for something like that was $250. I don't know if any steps have been taken. I know businesses like that can definitely, you know, afford more, big corporations like that. So, um, yeah, that was just kind of my gripe with, with them. And seeing if there's any way to hold them more accountable, since they take up, you know, two massive blocks on our downtown. Thanks.
So, um, Jeff, I just want to let you and the other South Side Cleanup people know that after Joseph came in and made his presentation to me, I did have a conversation with, um, Scott Brescher, who is our code enforcement officer. And he is going to be spending more time with the Stop &amp; Shop people and the Rite Aid people about keeping their properties cleaner. So, um, again, I want to tell all of you South Side Cleanup people how grateful I am for the work that you're doing. And I want you to know that we're not ignoring what you're telling us or what Joseph said to me in the presentation he made in my office. We are looking into ways to make this better. So thank you so much for the work that you're all doing. And we do take this seriously. Okay, Terry, is there someone else?
This is a phone number, Mayor, ending in eight, one, two, five. Please state your name and address for the record. Phone number ending, oh, there you go.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, my name is Mary Laney. I live at 400 North Second Avenue. And I wanted to make a request regarding the cat ordinance that was discussed in the last Borough Hall meeting. Picking up on sentiments expressed by several board members at that time, I'd like to make a pitch not to abolish the current cat ordinance, but rather to elaborate it, to become more substantive and to provide some protection for wildlife and humans. Within my property here in Highland Park, I've had a terrific problem with roaming cats. Cats that belong to neighbors but are allowed to roam at large. I'd love to see an ordinance that requires in addition to wearing a leash or having a license, that the cat owners maintain their cats in their homes, on their property, or, as I said, on their, on a leash. Recently, a new neighbor moved in with three roaming cats. Those cats are in my house, in my property every day, along with a cat from another neighbor. In the morning, I am awakened by squirrels chirping and barking, by birds chirping. My dog starts barking. I have to go downstairs. The only way to get rid of the cats is to take a water hose and spray it across the shrubbery and the periphery of boxwoods and other growings in my yard. I've been to that house three times. I've sent a note over there telling them I was afraid for myself. I was going to fall out there trying to get the cats out of the yard. I've asked them to keep the cats in their homes, in their yard. They replied that they didn't have to because Borough, Highland Park does not have a cat ordinance. And they're, they're free cats to roam. So I'd like to have something that could be done. I've come across a squirrel that was dismembered, had just been killed by one of those cats. I followed the cat back across the street to be sure which one it was. I buried a squirrel tail and a small foot. The, my dog went in the, in the tall grasses and flushed out the cat that had done it. Again, I went over and asked for some help. There is no help. I've called the police station. They said they don't get involved. It's between my, me and the people that own the cat. But I did say I was going to also call, also call Animal Control. I called Animal Control. They said they would go there and talk with the owner to keep those cats in. Whether or not they did, I don't know. But it's been to no avail because the cats continue to come in my house, I mean, my yard, and kill birds and squirrels. The National Geographic estimates that cats kill over 2 billion birds a year and more mammals than birds. Each cat has a killing average of nine. Finally, we humans have a right as citizens to enjoy our property. Any measure of quality of life considers community, neighborhood and home along with other aspects as determined as quality of life. The intrusive presence of invasive vicious cat on the premises of one's property, as I've described, erodes quality of life. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Terry?
Got four hands, Mayor. It looks like Charlie Cradaville is up next. State your name and address.
Yes, good evening, Charles Cradaville. I live in New Brunswick and I'm the Central Jersey Organizer for Food and Water Watch. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Did I miss the resolutions? I, I, I think it sounds like I did. I wanted to just check and see that 262 was adopted.
Yes.
Great, well, in that case, I want to thank the mayor and council, the residents, Sustainable Highland Park, and everyone who was involved in taking a stand on this really important local issue. As you are aware, there's already a gas-fired power plant polluting our air in the Kaseby section of Woodbridge. And there's a plan afoot for another one to be built and to essentially double the air pollution from that. And the more people learn about this, the more people learn about this company, the more people learn about the climate crisis, and the more people learn about the impacts on our health that these types of things have, the less they want to see it done here. So just by taking a stand and publicizing that stand tonight, you're helping to raise awareness of it. I understand the resolution is going to be forwarded to a lot of decision makers, including those at the state DEP, who ultimately have the final say on this application, should it proceed. And we, you know, on behalf of Food and Water Watch and all our members, thank you for, for taking this stand. And I encourage you to continue to be vigilant and, and, you know, forward-looking when it comes to this issue of, of the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And thank you for all the good work that Food and Water Watch does. Okay, Terry?
Red process here, okay. Looks like Mark and Rose is up next. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Rose DiLorenzo, 440 Cedar Ave, Highland Park. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'd just like to bring up pedestrian safety. Ms. Foster was going to email you, and then I realized tonight was a meeting. So I'm just sharing this with you. And please advise me if this was really more to speak with, um, you know, yourself and the police department. But, um, I've been noticing since, you know, school's been back in session and kids are going back and they're walking, that there's been a lot of near misses. And for example, this morning, I saw in the news that there was a pedestrian even hit on North Fourth and Raritan. I understand it was an adult woman, but it's still very concerning to me because not only do we have children in the school system who walks across town, and we recognize that there's a crossing guard shortage. But overall, our concern, you know, we do walk in town ourselves a lot. This is a very walkable town, as everyone can agree with. But in general, we're seeing too many cars not stopping or yielding for pedestrians and crosswalks. And again, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. Maybe it was discussed at other meetings or meetings with the police department. But, you know, it's, it's becoming almost an everyday occurrence. And I have a young child that too many times where we're not even yielded in a crosswalk where he's almost gotten hit. And if, and if he took one step ahead, he could have possibly gotten hit. About a week and a half ago, myself walking on, on the north side of town during school hours, walking in the crosswalk, a school mini bus from, from across the way almost hit me. I had to back off. And by the time I took my cell phone out to take a photo of the license plate, you can't see it in the image. And I'm not sure what it is, if there's a lot of influx of new residents that are unaware of, you know, yielding to pedestrians and the, and the crosswalks or not. But I'm just afraid, and I just want to go on record as saying that this concerns me. And I understand that, you know, everyone's trying their best. You guys are doing your best. I'm not here to complain. I'm really here to just, you know, if there's something else that we can do to kind of help everyone understand that there's a lot of people walking around town. And too many times, we're seeing people, um, almost get hit, even driving. We see too many times, I have a camera in my car, I can even show people, where people just blow right through the stop signs and, and almost, and cut us off, essentially. So I don't want to ramble on anymore, but I just wanted to go on. Saying that, yep, nope, I'm good. Thank you for listening. I'm not sure, maybe Ms. Foster, we can have this follow-up discussion. But this really concerns me. And I really just don't want somebody to actually get hit and tragically die because of this. Thank you.
Ms. Rose, I, earlier in my council report, I spoke about how we all need to be vigilant and, and be mindful that with this pandemic in particular, more people are utilizing the outside of buildings and especially in the schools. And that more people are walking around more than ever. And that we all have a responsibility, collective responsibility, to be our brother's keeper, our sister's keeper, for lack of a better term. But we all have a responsibility in keeping everyone safe. And yes, I do agree with everything that you've said, that there seems to be an, an uptick in people either not focusing, not paying attention, and just blatantly disregarding the rules. And the chief and I have been having some discussions, especially in light of what happened this morning. And we will continue to look at ways of how to keep each and every one of us safe. And we have to start doing our whole other safety campaign. That's maybe something that we'll have to get back into and remind everyone constantly that they need to slow down in our town, that we all live here and we all have to live in harmony. And we want everyone to be safe. I look forward to your email and for further discussions. Thanks.
Councilwoman Hirsch, did I see your hand up?
You did, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to, to, to just piggyback off of what Councilwoman Foster said. Because at our, at our last Safe Walking and Cycling Committee meeting, we talked about having a representative from the New Jersey Transportation Planning Association's Street Smart Campaign come and discuss ways that the borough can educate the public on safer streets and sidewalks. It's a driver and pedestrian culture-based effort that would improve safety conditions. I, uh, it's a pretty comprehensive campaign. We are having our next meeting on October 25th at 7:00 PM. Rose, I don't know if we, I, I, I don't believe that we have confirmed that a representative will attend. But obviously, I'll communicate that to Councilwoman Foster. And, 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 and we'll reach out. Because the problems that you identify are real. We have a, we have a middle schooler now who crosses town from the south side to the north side every day to, and, and crossing that street is, uh, is not easy. And I think that the driver culture right now, kind of emerging from the pandemic, coupled with the construction around town, has caused far greater erratic driving. And personally, I would love to see a little more enforcement there. And as well as considering pedestrian designated signals at the crosswalks on Raritan before, before cars can proceed. But you raised some really good issues. And you certainly have the concern of the year of the members of the council. Thank you for raising.
And to that point, there are thousands and thousands of cars that drive through Highland Park every single day on Route 27. It was, there was somewhat of a slowdown in the number of cars during COVID. But, you know, the traffic is back up again. At one point prior to COVID, we were looking at something like 25,000 cars a day back and forth on Route 27. So it is a concern. And, um, you know, something that really needs to be looked at. And I'm sure Councilwoman Foster will work with Lieutenant Satchow and the chief on these traffic situations. Okay. Borough Administrator?
Yes, Mayor. And we are at the 8:45 mark, just for sake of saying so. We've got three hands at this point. Looks like a phone number ending in two, five, four, seven. Please state your name and address for the record. Phone number ending, oh, there you go.
Hi, this is Gina Hirsch at 261 South Ninth Avenue. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please go on.
Awesome. Um, so I also wanted to back up the South Side Cleanup initiative and raise just a few more points. I don't know if these have already been brought up to the council before or to the mayor during the meetings. But some of the things that people have also mentioned in Facebook groups, too, are the shopping carts and also the coupon mailers. To me, both, I consider both of those things littering as well. And would like to see some responsibility taken or on the companies that, basically are, have, have not taken responsibility for, for having those around town. So the shopping carts, I'm sure many people on the South Side have seen them. They're all over town. And I don't know if there's been anything done to say something to Stop &amp; Shop, to have them return them. And then also the coupon mailers, that's something that happens weekly and kind of collects throughout the South Side. And that's something that often Jeff and Joe have picked up on the cleanup every other week. So just wanted to bring those two points up and see if there was anything that has been done to address that with the company that makes the coupon mailers or Stop &amp; Shop with the shopping carts.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, Scott Brescher, our code enforcement officer, was going to have a, a, a pretty strong conversation with Stop &amp; Shop. I'll make sure he covers the shopping carts as well when he speaks with them. Councilwoman Foster, I believe you wanted to say something?
Um, as the mayor was saying, that we need to go back to the conversation with Stop &amp; Shop years ago when we had an influx of shopping carts all over town. What we, they had put together a program where you had to put a quarter in and had to return the carts like in other areas. So maybe we need to go back to saying, let's, let them start that program again. So you have to put a quarter, you have to return the carts. And that helped tremendously with the huge amount of carts being abandoned all over. So I think another conversation is going to be very, very needed
Thirty seconds.
to help to curb this, this, this particular shopping cart incident. I do want to also say that I hear your concerns about the people that, the, the weekly flyer that's distributed. And that they do pile up. I do see them, if people collect them from their front steps, they wouldn't collect as much. And if they dispose them appropriately, would not collect as much. I am, however, a very strong advocate for those people who provide those flyers on a weekly basis. Because oftentimes, those people that you see distributing, they are people who are getting their life back together again. They were formerly incarcerated people. These are the only jobs that they can get. And I would hate to see where we took away income from a family or somebody who's trying to get themselves back together to take away income and resources from these people who it's not always easy for them to get a job. So please consider that as you decide how we move forward. This is something that we have to look at the human side of this. And maybe all of us have a responsibility to collect those bags. And so, because it provides income, it provides livelihood for these folks. So in our consideration of what we should do, that should be highly, highly, highly considered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Terry, do we have any other speakers?
We do. We have two left, one of which hasn't spoken before. So I'm going to go with that one first and then we'll go to the other one soon as time. Ray Board? Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm live on 429 South Second. 429 South Second. I'm wondering about, are we going to hire social workers working for our police departments and help our policemen? Because there is lots of issues that it's only social workers can solve. Are we planning to do that for police departments?
So Ray, just to let you know, the police department now works with the Rutgers Behavioral Health folks that are in Piscataway, and they are on call for us and other municipalities when we know that we may be sending police into a situation where there might be a need for a social worker. However, that being said, you know, I have an Equity Advisory Council that works with me and with the Councilwoman Foster, who handles public safety for the council on things that we should be looking at as we move forward with our police department. So I don't know, Councilwoman Foster, if you wanted to add to that?
No, I was gonna say, in my earlier report, I talk about working with the Obama Institute and the police reform solutions that they are coming up with. And they this week in our session on Thursday, we're gonna find out what is the next step about using social workers along in conjunction with the police department, if that should be something that would be considered, should it be handled separately? So those are some of the information. As I said, I'm in this workshop, I'm learning a lot, and I'm gonna be passing it back on to everyone. But as the mayor said, I was gonna add those pieces as well, what we currently do, but I'm looking, we're doing this among this nationwide workshop campaign with the foundation and police reform. So I'm quite sure I'm gonna learn what other people are doing around the country to help or to alleviate and to provide services for those who are disturbed or just going through a hard time at the moment when the the officers get called or you know, because there's some really interesting approaches that they're using in lieu of, but it's not, it hasn't been all but we'll continue to look into it and provide more information as I as I learn, I'll I'll share with you.
Thank you. Okay, Terry, it's 8:53. Do we have another?
One hand remaining. It looks like it's Lois Leving, I believe, 4445.
Hi, it is Lois Leving, North Second. Okay, the newspapers, the unwanted flyers. I ended receiving those years and years ago because back probably in the 1990s, the council, oh, I think it was Virginia Record, Councilwoman said, if you look at the very bottom of your plastic bag with those grocery store and whoever grocery store shopping people's flyers, there's a a phone number, and you just have to call in, I think it was 800. And amazingly, they've never started up again. I'm happy people have jobs to deliver those, but when you don't want them, instead of them ending in the drain, and then we don't get drainage, call and cancel. Excuse me, save a tree. Okay, the other thing, Route 27, I know that's a state highway, but can't this town or this state come up with something, or maybe New York is already doing it, or probably California? Why, if transportation, if walking is a mode of transportation that doesn't involve wheels and vehicles, which I happen to like, why can't pedestrians have their own time and the traffic, north, south, and east and west, the the four-wheel vehicles stop completely? And pedestrians only and alone get to cross the street? We have had many, 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 many accidents, I think, in the early 2000s. The lady who used to live across the street went then moved to River Ridge Terrace here in town. She was hit on North or South Fourth, I think North Fourth. And I don't know which got broken, but she had her cane, so it was probably her wrist was broken because of that. So why can't pedestrians, perhaps bicycles, maybe not, or or strollers? Why can't they have their own green light somewhere somehow, and all the cars are stopped? Thank you. Take care.
Thank you, Lois. We we actually did look into that for some of our key intersections a couple of years ago. Elsie, I saw your hand go up. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Yes, there is currently, the chief is looking at some kind of a traffic study that we can look, it's it's a pedestrian traffic study. It's not just in just one particular area, but it's all over that we we had a conversation about what it is that we need to do, what kind of traffic study we need to work with DOT and others on to create. I think it's called Bond the Box, where it's like everything would stop and and then everything would start up again. Pretty much like what they do in New York. That's that's the the concept, is that all four boxes, everything slows down, traffic flows, and then you know, after that, then traffic would start flowing. So the conversation is ongoing. We're looking into different ways to create different kind of traffic patterns and traffic calming devices. And again, we'll keep you posted as we learn more and as we get more information and have more funding and get these studies done. It does take some time, though.
Right, especially because it involves the state, you know, the Department of Transportation as of Route 27. Councilman Hirsch, I see your hand up.
So I mean, the the fact that a state highway running through our town, that's not new, right? And 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 I would be I would suggest that in 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 all but name, it is not a highway. It's a two-lane road that feels very much like a municipal main street. So I mean, the the fact that, you know, and I know that we're talking with DOT on a number of issues. And this is something that I think that we should really, really advocate strongly for. Pedestrian access in our downtown and mobility from the north side to the south side, it should, you know, is is paramount. And I'm not saying that we're not doing that. But to have a pedestrian designated cycle at at at, you know, not just some of the key crosswalks, but you know, first through fifth, would not only allow better pedestrian access and safety crossing the streets, but it would also alleviate the bottleneck that happens when cars are are waiting for pedestrians to to cross the street. Just look at North Fifth, for example, you know, if you're if you're in that areas, particularly around when when school is going into session. The 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 backup there is is significant, and that's because there is a crossing guard who is rightfully helping students cross the street at at a at Fifth. And all of that would go away if there were a pedestrian designated signal or an arrow. And so as we talk to DOT about other issues, those should really come to the front burner, too.
Yeah, that conversation has been ongoing for a few years, Matt, just so you know. Okay. Any other questions?
It shouldn't take that long.
Yeah. Oh, I see Borough Attorney Schmier, do you have something to say?
I am there. There was one hand that popped up. I just didn't want you to overlook that. Sorry.
Okay, so let the other person go first.
Final hand, and then attorney. All right, Joseph. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Joseph, I can do 12 South Eighth Avenue again. I just wanted to follow up on, you know, those those plastic coupon mailers. With all due respect, I do hear the argument. I understand they provide jobs. So would that power plant, right? So do lots of things that in the name of progress, we decide, you know, this is just maybe there's other other ways for these folks to 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 find gainful employment, things like that. Obviously, there's tons and tons and tons of places hiring now, especially, you know, let other towns bear the burden of these mailers, ones that, you know, perhaps have folks who will call those numbers to opt out of them, who will actually throw them in the trash. You know, I can't tell you how many of those we pick up every week. And for a town that has banned plastic bags, which have an obvious and immediate use for folks at the grocery store and other places, I just find it a little incredulous that we still allow, you know, what is for most people trash, and I understand they're useful, a lot of people do use them, keep them in a centralized location, you know, have them dropped off somewhere people can go grab them and want them. Certainly, lots of this stuff is available online, but you know, the the every Thursday, just festooning people's front yards with these, you know, mailers, it it's it's a it is a blight, and we do pick up a lot of this stuff. And I would encourage anybody on, you know, on this meeting to come join us this Sunday at 9:00 AM, you know, at the Wokovitz Pavilion and see exactly what we're talking about, because it's 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 pretty bad. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, Terry?
It's nice that some people have the luxury of.
I'm sorry, Elsie, did you want to raise your hand? Okay, did do you have something to say?
Some of us are much fortunate than others, and we just have to be careful that we make sure that we have a place for all. That's all I'm saying, that there needs to be a spot for everyone. Yes, we do not need to have clutterings of these, but if we're all caring about each other and we all want to be responsible citizens, a two-second bend down to take something inside your house and dispose of it appropriately, it's not a heavy lift. And especially if it's gonna keep someone employed and keep them out of the penal system.
Thank you, Elsie. And Councilwoman Canavera, I see your hand.
I also want to add, as someone who's low income, those coupons that are in there a lot of times makes the difference as to whether or not my family's gonna be able to eat that week. Because when you need things that you can't necessarily get with SNAP benefits or anything like that, you have to use the money, and those coupons help cut that cost greatly. And also, I, yes, there are other ways people can get it, but not everybody has internet access. I have internet access, but I don't have a printer because I can't afford printer ink and things like that. So they are beneficial to low-income residents also.
Thank you, Tara. Okay, Borough Attorney Schmier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the final public comment this evening, the clerk's office did receive a message this afternoon. And with a request that we read the message into the record. And the message is as follows. The current contract with CME does not include a study of the activity on North Third Avenue at Raritan Avenue and North and South Fifth Avenue in the traffic study. Surely, they should be included as well, since they get some of the overflow traffic that cannot proceed on South Third or northbound on North Fourth Avenue. Why is the traffic on these streets not being studied as well? Since Bruce Koch is the Highland Park Borough Attorney and also a principal at CME Associates, the use of CME Associates is a clear conflict of interest. Residents of Highland Park will have no confidence in the results of this study if it is conducted by CME Associates. In light of this fact, please indicate why you would continue with the decision to use CME Associates to perform the traffic study. Respectfully yours, Peter Spohle. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And by the way, Bruce Koch is not the Borough Attorney. Sir, you are. And obviously, we don't agree with accusations in this statement. So I appreciate you reading it, though. Okay, we're going to move on. Basically, we have our our work session coming up next. There's only one item on the work session. Does the council want to take a break, or are you ready to move right on?
Let's move on.
Okay, agreed. Thank you very much.
I agree.
Okay, the one item on the work session, Terry, it's got your initials next to it, our Best Practices Inventory.
As a reminder, the Best Practices Inventory is something that the state requires every town to complete. And your your resulting score is one of the factors they use in order to determine if you get your full portion of state aid. And I'll cut to the end just to mention that we got 23 points, which qualifies for full state aid reimbursement. The minimum you would need is 15, so I think we did fairly well. I will say, a lot of the questions are zero-point questions. It's a lot of the state trying to get some information about what's happening at the local level, and you can kind of see where they're exploring certain areas. So I thought I would just start by reading each of the 14 pages, one by one. But but essentially, we will do, you know, it's essentially questions across areas like personnel, finance, administration, policy that they they are soliciting questions on. And I I prepared the PDF of our responses. It's pending, you know, certification that we're having this discussion. That's part of the process as well. I want to know if the council received the materials and had an opportunity to discuss it if they wanted to. It's kind of hard to boil it down into highlights because it does cover such a wide array of areas, but I would say they've they've fine-tuned the process a little bit. It's a little easier to get through each year. And I would say a lot of our finance stuff, just as we've experienced during our recent years as our audits, I think are getting smoother, and our our answers are yes, with a more confident yes in a good way. And I really do use the opportunity to look into policies and why aren't we doing that? And anything, there may be things we said no to, but that doesn't mean we can't do it for next year. You know, that's that's all stuff that we can talk about as appropriate. So with that, I guess I would leave it to the council and the mayor with, if you have any questions for me about it. I know you haven't had days to look at it, but it is very similar to ones we've done in the past. So I just, before I bore everybody, I just thought I'd.
So let me suggest, Terry, that we allow the council to take some time to to look at it. And perhaps we can add this back on to the next work session. So if they have any questions on it, they can ask you. I'm seeing council heads going.
My only hesitation, I think we have to submit the the this program to the state, and part of that was saying we had this opportunity to discuss it, and it was made available to council. So I'm happy to do that, but I guess I just got to make sure that's, you know.
That the deadline date doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay. And and if it does, Terry, then we can certainly.
I would also encourage anybody to, you know, ask any questions of me in the meantime. You don't have to wait till.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
To 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 ask. But I will say, it it covers, you know, fair labor standards all the way through, you know, at the very end, you know, things like do we have a recreation commission? You know, you know, it just covers a wide array. Some of the questions aren't necessarily answering no is a bad thing. I just want to make that really clear. It's for the zero-point questions, and most cases are more for informational purposes for the state. So just wanted you to be aware.
So let me suggest that you send that under separate cover to everyone. Oh, you did. Okay. Okay. All right. Any questions on best practices? We don't have any need for an executive session tonight. I want to thank our professionals for joining us tonight, Jim Constantine and H. Schmier. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.